All right, the Beatty City Joint Special Committee Meeting for Thursday, April 25th, 2019 has been called to order. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wirewall, Bruce Trucca, myself, and Andrew Shock. Monica is absent. First up, meeting is called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. And first up, we have our president, Ms. Love.
I wanted to make sure everybody knew and understood that since this, we normally hold our committee meetings on the Thursday following the Tuesday city council meetings. That's when we're scheduled in by law. We have to have them at a specific time in order for them to be held. By postponing it from last week to this week because of polling week, we didn't hold it last Thursday night, this becomes a special committee meeting. And for a special committee meeting, we publish the agenda ahead of time. The agenda has been published twice. And notice is sent out to council members, to the press, to the newspaper, to Crawford County Now, to...
Our website.
But...
On our website.
On our website, it's all out there. So what we have to do is we are required to stick to the items on the agenda tonight. There can be no variation from what is on the agenda. And tonight's agenda is the Economic Development Committee is going to talk about some income tax rebate proposals. The Finance Committee will talk about appropriations. Health and Safety Committee is going to talk about grass and trash inspector and vacant building ordinance. And then the Finance Committee will call back to order and discuss the income tax rebate proposals and grass and trash inspector. So know that those are the items and people have inquired and have been told that these will be the agenda items for this evening. So if you get off base off of a discussion of what is being discussed, I'm sorry, but we'll have to hold it till the next committee meeting when that item is on the agenda or when it is a regular meeting, when anything can be brought up. So we are under different rules for this evening. This is by the Ohio Revised Code. We have nothing to do with how this works. This is how the revised code says it must work. So be aware of that this evening. So Mr. Fode, if you'd get started, please.
All right. Up for number two, we have public participation. Anybody that would like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, up for order committee business. First up, we have Economic Development Committee. I will call that to order at 6:03 PM. All right, we have income tax rebate proposals. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Rattler.
Well, we have two new entities coming to town. One who has recently purchased the water garage on Mary Grove. They have asked us to look at the tax credit for businesses. The tax credit for businesses is provided for in the Ohio Revised Code and allows them to provide the credit for new income taxes that would be generated through a new business, a new employment in the city. That money can be remaded back to the employer to spur growth or lure someone to the area. So we have new company coming to town. They've asked us to look at that. We expect to have, I think, three to five employees starting out, and then they may grow from there. So that's what the request is, that's what you have in the form of the ORC section, doesn't what the rules are. You can grant up to 100% or up to 15%.
And if I understand that correctly, Mr. Rattler, that is all based off the number of employees that you have?
New, new employees.
Yes, to earn that credit.
Right, yeah.
And so since this is a new business here, would you like to read this for...
Yeah, absolutely. It is Section 1815, Tax Credit for Businesses that Lost Their New Jobs in Ohio. A municipal corporation by ordinance may grant a refundable or non-refundable credit against its tax on income to a taxpayer that lost their job creation in a municipal corporation. If the credit is granted under this section, it shall be measured as a percentage of the new income tax revenue the municipal corporation derives from new employees of the taxpayer and shall be for a term not exceeding 15 years. Before the municipal corporation passes an ordinance granting a credit, the municipal corporation and the taxpayer shall enter into an agreement specifying all the conditions of the credit. And this is amended by the 130th General Assembly on 9/26/2003. Any questions?
So would you like to add in too? You've done the legal description, how this would work?
Well, basically, the idea is, is, you know, the new business is coming in, they're going to start out with a small number of employees. Ultimately, we want to help them to grow and prosper as much as they can in our community. The better they do, the better it is for us. So this allows us to, by all means, give them a credit that they can turn around and use, an income tax credit, based off of the number of new employees that they hire. That will in turn give them money to spur more economic growth for their facility, possibly hire even more new employees. But it's just a way for us to foster new businesses in a sense and show them that our community is willing to help them and help them grow at the same time.
Example, please. Three employees, they pay in 100, 200 dollars...
I don't know the exact dollar...
No, just take some numbers.
If you had, if you had three employees at 50,000 a year, the 2% of city Beatty City Income Tax fee would be $1,000 per employee. The city would receive $1,000 for each of those employees, that's our 2%, right? So that 2% then can be a refundable credit that goes back to the business. So three employees at 50,000 would be 1,000 per employee. We would, we could refund back to the business up to $3,000 in that scenario for a period of up to 15 years. You can, yeah, you can prorate it, you can incentivize it by, you know, if your payroll goes to a certain level, we give you more, if it lasts longer, whatever. You have all the creativity that you want, but that's, that's, would be the basis, the calculation on a year-to-year basis for three, $50,000 a year employees.
But it wouldn't have to be the full hundred thousand, or the $4,000 per employee, it could be half.
Could be whatever you want.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, yeah. The maximum is 100% for 15. And you can set benchmarks at, you know, different levels, whatever you want.
Are there any provisions that would prevent the company from using that, and then when that term expires, they leave? Can you hold them accountable that they'll refund you if they leave before the agreements met or anything like that?
No, it's purely a year-to-year situation. If they leave, then they would have no income taxes, they wouldn't get anything back.
But what, you give them during the time they're there and you can't recover any of that?
No. There's no provision for it. I mean, there's nothing that's a hit, is it, that I'm aware of? So I mean, you could, you could do something like that.
Mr. Rattler?
Is there, do we have any examples from any other communities like that? I mean, we don't have this now, right?
It's been state law for about 15 years, we just never used it.
We've never used it, I like, yeah, I think it's a great idea, I think we should be using it. I don't know, I don't think, you know, maybe, let's say, Findlay, maybe Findley's only given half of, you know, they...
Want me to get some examples?
Might not be a, you know, city, you know, others, because do we want to give it all, do we want to give part, you know?
I can get with some other, get some information and...
The other thing is, the personal income tax, they're still, they'll pay their income tax, we'll just give a credit to the employer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, refund, yeah, refund the credit, so...
Yeah, the employee would receive, you know, they paid their money, okay, for, to the city. So it's not costing the employee anything.
Is the credit back off of them, what?
And if you're looking for examples, I would suggest, this is something that Gary Frankhouse brought our attention about, two years ago now, maybe? So we've been looking for opportunities to try and use it, so, you know, maybe we should reach out to him for examples, might be, might be a good opportunity.
That was what I was going to do, just see if we could have him come to it next meeting and bring some of us over there.
And then, I guess, now this is something that we, is a case-by-case situation? Yeah, because if, you know, a guy, it's like a garage sale somewhere, he doesn't want to pay his employees, you know? I'm just saying, you know, he may not be in business as long as, say, Burger King or something. I think if Burger King makes an investment in the community, they're going to be here for a while, you know?
I have a question. Maybe I'm totally off-base, but this is, this is a credit back to the employer of income taxes that are withheld from the employees.
Right.
So employees are paying their taxes, and then the city is giving part of that money back to the employer for improvements, hiring more people, maybe benefits, maybe something.
Coming to town, yeah.
What about their net profit, they kind of...
It doesn't apply that, it just says that it's a refundable credit that could be, you know, so the limits, there's no limits on that. If they're going to have the net profit, you know, that may be money that just flows back to us as well. So, you know, what we're giving back in employee, you know, income taxes, we may see flow back to us in a new business that's, that is doing profits. There's a chance that it can be a wash for us, you know, with the tax...
Well, I don't see it as a wash in the first few years, because generally, a new business doesn't have net profit initially.
Right.
Unless they're doing extremely well.
Well...
Because they have all the cost of...
Yeah. In this case, this is a business that's relocated, probably a new branch, so maybe more profitable or...
Do you have some other...
Oh, I just wanted to hear from the other group.
But I, at the same time, the point that Joyce made of, you know, the business is starting out, it doesn't create that net profit, you know, that's the kind of the idea of earnings, is that at the same time, foster that new business and help them to grow to get to that point in our community, show that we're willing to help them, work with them like that.
Do you...
We'll do some example.
Yep.
Does anybody else have anything? All right, then I will call Economic Development to order, or I mean, I saw everyone adjourned at 6:00...
No, recess, nobody says...
Recession, at 6:10, 6:11.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize, yeah, I didn't realize, I wasn't here, but I didn't realize that put me in the hot seat. Okay, I guess I'll call Finance Committee to order at 6:11. We have appropriations, and I'm the queen of appropriations, run down here.
Okay, I do have a question regarding the amount that I have requested for the police department, in that the police chief just brought in a donation that he received today for Operation Hope. And this is, this goes in the same category, the materials and supplies category, and we need to turn that around because it was donated to fly a person who's now in recovery, that graduated from their, back to be with her children. And I looked at his Operation Hope line, and it's not looking good, and it needs this $250. Can we add that to this appropriation?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the general fund, under Program 1 Security of Persons and Property, in the police department, Materials and Supplies category, we need to appropriate $5,114 rather than the $4,864 that's on the sheet. And then that will increase the numbers to the right accordingly. And then in Program 7, under General Government...
Before you move on from that one, you're saying that there's $5,114, that's donations from Safety Town and a $3,000...
No, it's not Safety Town, it's a donation for Operation Hope.
It's the 5,114?
Oh, the 4,864 is for Safety Town and Police Explorers. 3,000 of that is Police Explorers.
Okay.
And that was a grant from the community foundation.
Okay, and then the rest of the money is coming from where?
Donations to Safety Town.
Another donation.
Right. And then the 250 is a donation for Operation Hope. And that totals the 5,114.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, just so we actually know where the... So none of this money is actually coming out of any general fund or anything like that?
No, it's just a flow-through, it's all donations.
Okay, okay. Then your second item?
The second item has to do with council, Program 7, General Government, $3,500 in capital outlay, and I believe you have a copy of a quote from Business Essentials for a fireproof cabinet to keep the ordinance books in?
We've run out of room. And all the cabinets are current, we have two cabinets in there now.
Yeah, we have two cabinets, each one is good for about 50 years, there's about 50 years of materials in there. These are permanent records, we never get rid of them. I did a few, I looked around for a few quotes, they're all within about $30. Business Essentials is local, so they were actually were the cheapest, but only by about $30 or so. And this will get us to release the next 30 to 40 years, so we should be good for a while.
Yeah, I checked also, when I see that, it came as, yeah, that's the price.
Yeah, no, we could buy about 15 years if I stacked the books horizontally, but we can't do that. I need to be vertically stacked for this fine, so that's what we're at.
They can, if they have to be stacked that way?
Yeah.
Is there any compliance?
Not in compliance, otherwise they get warped, and these things are hundreds of years old.
Or your compliance?
Yeah, so...
I just thought, so you mean they actually need a law to tell them, how is that? Okay, go ahead.
No, but to keep my handle antiquities and things like that, say that this is the best way to make sure that we preserve them. So that's $3,500.
Okay, can you do the following one? So I have a motion to, I guess, move forward with appropriations?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, motion, hearings, and with that, call this meeting adjourned at...
You know, recess, please.
A recess at 6:17?
I'm sorry. We'll call Health and Safety Committee to order at 6:17 PM. First item is the Grass and Trash Inspector, Mr. Rattler.
Thank you, sir. This is, we're entering our third summer with Gordon Groves, our property maintenance inspector, thank you very much. The, what we found in our first two years is that November, December, January, February, the court and other bodies really aren't too interested in enforcing property maintenance codes, and there's really just not a lot of work that can be done on some of the issues. But what happens is, like today in my yard, and for the next two or three months, grass and trash and rubbish and stuff like that gets really out of hand, and it's kind of overwhelming for the limited amount of time we have, Gordon, in trying to also do property maintenance. So what we have thought about and kind of worked out, maybe a good way to deal with that is to have two people during those summer months, each working part-time, each working kind of limited hours, but one that can just focus on the trash and the grass and those kind of complaints. We, we have eighty-some yards right now that are on a continuous mow list, that people have just abandoned their yards, and so we mow. That's something I think we should follow up on. Joyce can give you some indication of how much money you receive back when we assess these properties and they go through tax foreclosure and sale, if it's notable, if any. So we think maybe stepping up enforcement on the front end, preventing, getting to that point, prevent us from spending a lot of money mowing and then just don't recover it. It may be a benefit to do that. So we would take the budget that we have currently for Gordon, we would shorten his working year, and we would work on a three or four month period, have two guys, or guys and girls, or whoever, out there just kind of, with one to have a focus of the trash and the grass, which is a source of many, many complaints that we get at this time of the year. So if we do that, unfortunately, we have to jump through a lot of hoops, which means we have to change the manpower and build to have a second property maintenance person. Doesn't really change the budget any, although if you want to talk a lot of money into that design. It doesn't change the budget any, but it would, does increase our manpower.
So essentially, the time you're going to shorten on your current employees' hours throughout the year are going to be...
Those winter months.
They're going to compensate the addition of signing.
Yeah, and it's, you know, this winter, no, you can't, you can't put signing on your house, you can't do a lot of stuff in November through February around here, so that may be a better, I think it would be a better use of our money, and hopefully, you know, speed up some of those property and grass issues that, that we have, the trash, the couches sitting up like, or backyard wall mattresses, things like that, like you see this time of year. Give them your school to be out, like, the little backyard furniture mattresses, you know?
Is this a function that anyone else, that's a current city employee, they kind of care of, and, I mean, the idea of shortening Gordon's working year if that's kind of unnecessary time anyway? You know, is there any other city employee that's, could possibly take over that role so that we're not, you know, maybe we're just cutting expenses in general, by getting somebody else to accomplish the work of the grass trash inspector extra person that we're looking right on?
I can't answer that, I, you know, that'd be certain safety director staff. I know last year we struggled heavily trying to keep up with the mowing, and that keeps right now, I'm right here, we're struggling trying to find part-time people to mow the jobs this summer, so I don't know that their availability would be definitely a question to ask them.
But this person's role is to just inspect and see if, see what's in need?
Yeah, and the process is very complicated, too. Because the process requires, we, generally how we do it is, we, a complaint is taken, you know, somebody calls up City Hall, or they call Gordon, or whatever, and we message. So the first step is go out and inspect, is the grass too high, is the trash isn't really there. And you got to come back to the office, you got to document the pictures, you got to put together the letter, you got to send the letter out, and you got to wait seven days after the receipt of the letter. And then, there's a 10, you get confused, it's seven or 10 days. And then after 10 days, if you haven't had no response, you go back out, you verify, take new photographs, you bring those back, you got to document the file that is still there after 10 days. Currently, what happens is those generally then get sent up to the city, and the city will get them on the mow list and go get it done, generates paperwork then that goes through the order eventually, where they get those recorded up on the property tax. And then in our office, once that report's done and the second inspection's been done, it gets forwarded to me. I can prosecute right away, but we tend not to, we tend to try to, you know, make some phone calls, do some follow-ups, door hangers, to try to get people to mow the yard, you know? It's expensive, you can strike that argument in court. If we get no, no response at that point, then it would take a, follow the program, try to go to court, you know, find...
I got a question, why are some of the two of our offices?
Well, it goes on property taxes. And then when those property taxes get paid, the first half of this year, we received $2,665 for the mowing that was done and placed on property taxes. Now, I don't know, because it's done through utility office, I don't know how much was actually placed on.
Yeah, and when they go to share sale, if somebody pays their property taxes, then they pay it full, then they do get that, before that. But if they don't, if it's a property that is up for share sale, or is up in land bank, or wherever, then they are full. If they, or some of the properties that are bankrupt, you know, you know, unless they are recovered, that's one of you.
I think you take care of sending letters and things such a touch, or that?
No, well, no, we just, my office just handles the, the, well, yeah, yeah, exactly.
So they, I mean, they come through our office, and he's responsible for creating some of the mailing and things like that, so we got, you know, sort of different. But only to a certain point does he enter the pictures.
Well, I was just going to kind of go through the same process, but related to trash, in that we don't, you know, we do go out and mow these properties, but if we have a trash situation, are we coming out, we're not coming out and picking up their trash for them?
It depends, it depends on the situation. In some, we do, we just did it recently at a structure close to downtown.
Okay.
And then we have to assess that to the property tax laws.
Well, I've had many complaints. Now, when it's cold out, what are we going to do with those people that are, got a legit problem? I mean, what I'm saying is, it seems like we're tilting the scale one way, is that keeping it nice and even on, you know, trying to take care of the people that are, got problems in the cold months.
Yeah, the difference is, in the cold months, when we have, you know, the property maintenance issues, there's less we can do from an enforcement side of it. So while we're still documenting, and a lot of times over the winter, Gordon's following up on inspections that started over the summer, repairs, and doubling back on those to make sure that things were done. But new cases don't generally start in the winter months, because we don't have, just there's a lot of these people can't do. They'll take those complaints, and if there's something serious with grass, like, you know, for a child, or it's collapsing, or they have a left school, we can deal with those. But I mean, it's, you know, new complaints, it's kind of the basic, you know, property maintenance violations. You don't start a lot of new ones over, over the winter. I'd love to have Gordon around and then throw some, give maybe, you know, somebody additional, but just somebody that you were outside of the town.
Well, this is just dealing with trash, though, and grass, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, there's lots of trash in the wintertime.
Well, Bruce, those, those complaints can still be directed, directed straight to the law director, I mean, Rob will still be there.
Yes, yeah.
It's not as though we're unstaffing those, not anymore, so I think those complaints would still go to the law director, possibly if we see success with this thing, if we can grow that program into a year law.
One thing about trashing and grass, more so than the property maintenance, because the property maintenance is a very long involved process, but the trashing grass is a little bit more immediate, if you're citing people, getting them into court and responding, you know, that, that process is a little bit more immediate than it may have some impact there.
Yep, the right decision.
Oh, hey, Dan.
Hey, so when this trash inspector, oh, what a tie-off, trash inspector could give up into some of these, I mean, we've talked about this before, about the dumpsters around town not being in compliance with our ordinance to be, I'm not saying go in and start fighting people, but let them, let them be aware of...
Yeah, it's more of a zoning issue, and land use issue, that, those dumpsters, and, you know, dumpsters are on city property, and private dumpsters, or even our own, that's a, that's more of a zoning issue, that's, you know, through the zoning office system, where the property there, you know, you can't shut tires in the office, it's unconstitutional.
Yeah, I see that.
So you can't shut your dumpster tires, so...
Okay.
Mark, how much does this position cost for the city's budget currently?
Well, it would, it'd be, it'd be relatively neutral on the city budget, because we're not changing the, the amount that is budgeted for that position.
Which you took away from Gordon, you had...
Yeah, we're, we're essentially cutting back Gordon's winter hours and applying those to a, a...
I just want to make sure I understood that, yeah.
In trashing grass, you need somebody responsible, but you don't necessarily need somebody with all the building credentials, or fire credentials, or something like Gordon has.
So there will be two new positions, and Gordon will be gone?
No, 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 just, just one, one position, just Gordon's hours will be shortened, Gordon's season, if you will, will be shortened, and then the second position will pick up with those hours that drop off in the wintertime.
And what, what's the position again?
It'd be whatever the, what the market bears and what our budget is, we decide how many hours we need. I mean, I don't think it's something we need more than, you know, one or two afternoons a week for probably about an eight to nine week period. Really, late April to July is when you have that heavy grass and trash period. And then you have some follow-up after that, as support bases and things, grab on access out there. Those are the, those are the high, high incident, high call times.
So is there like a job description?
We create one, certainly.
I was just wondering what the job description was going on.
For Gordon?
Yeah.
We have a property maintenance inspector description. We need that too. And right now includes all those six.
So, so let me elaborate, or get elaboration, I guess. So I, when you first mentioned that, I thought we were just doing two property maintenance. Now, this is a whole new.
No, it's essentially just two property maintenance people. Just one's just gonna, one's just.
Same job description, same?
Well, one's gonna be focused on.
Oh, one will be focused, right.
Yeah, one will be focused on trash and grass and not really, not really be doing housing inspection.
Two positions. What one's focused on, so.
But see, in order to do this, we need, we need the ability and the manpower.
Right.
Changed in order to, as we can, we don't have the other to be able to pay them.
And if you have questions, whether or not, if you see a quality, maybe that's a question that I can answer.
We can take that back to the, to the service director if you want.
Yes, it really, if it boils down to, we, we could make a motion to adjust this now, or we could ask for some more information, take this up, or anything.
That's probably what we're gonna do.
So, Mr. Raloff, if we could, the next thing, see the job descriptions, see the anticipated pay, and anything else, you know, potential natural disaster, and I can be, we can.
Thank you. You're still up. Next item is vacant building ordinance.
All right, the next up is vacant building ordinance. It's been in committee for a while, we've got a couple versions of it there. Not sure what else I can tell you.
Probably highlights of what we see during the city.
Well, vacant, vacant building ordinance is a registration program that helps the city to define vacant and abandoned structures. We have a lot of structures that are, that exist within the city that are bank buildings or in the foreclosure process, or absentee owners. Been emptied and vacant for years and years and years. There, the incidence increased dramatically after the last Halloween double situation. We still have to recover from that. Land banks is, Mr. Mill, and getting a lot of properties done, but we still have quite a few more. And, you know, everything from commercial properties to residential properties. The vacant building ordinance helps identify what is vacant, sets standards for if a building is gonna remain vacant or abandoned, what it needs to look like. And it is designed to place some costs on, on that vacant, that vacant building. There have been some studies in the past on, on those types of ordinances. There are currently a hundred and sixteen that I can count, cities in the state of Ohio that have a vacant building ordinance, drafted after the model ordinance that I sent back by you guys. Studies have indicated that, that the vacant building ordinance is a, one study looked at Toledo, and I know we're not Toledo, but in Toledo, they found that there were three point eight million in direct costs associated with the vacant buildings. That's fire, lease, things like the mowing and those sorts of things. Two point seven million in lost tax revenues, ninety-eight point seven million in lost property value revenues. Because what you gotta keep in mind is these vacant buildings impacting the entire neighborhood and detracting the property value in the entire neighborhood. Which that resulted in about two point si- two point six million in lost tax revenue. We're five percent the size of Toledo, so if you, if you take Toledo's numbers from their two thousand eighteen study, and convert that, you know, by five percent, that's a, to our budget, that's a hundred ninety thousand in direct costs, thirteen, thirteen and a half thousand in lost tax revenue, four point nine million in lost property value, and a hundred thirty-two thousand in, in lost property value. Sandusky dropped, adopted a vacant building ordinance about three years ago. Within the first two years, they saw vacant building rates drop by eighty-six percent. Last year, in two thousand eighteen, the state of Ohio offered grants for rehab of historic buildings that were vacant and abandoned. Thirty million dollars was given out by the state to rehab those kind of properties. None in Crawford County, none, only one or two, I guess, but both in Tiffin, in the entire district that we're in. And the reason is, because when these buildings sit vacant, if there's not, if there's not a cost to them, then there's no incentive to, to move the building forward. I mean, I think y'all just can look around town and see buildings that, there's, there's buildings that are vacant now that were vacant when I was in Florida. And, and they're still there. So we have to find ways to spur economic development, and we have to find ways to increase and produce incentives for people to rehab these houses. We, we had two city buildings that we recently sold at auction. And on both of those buildings, there were a number of people that, that came and spoke, and that were not in favor of having those buildings sold. But both of those buildings now house brand new businesses. There's a business that contacts me frequently, because they're looking for something, some specific requirements, but they're looking for something in the, to relocate to here, but there's just nothing for sale, nothing open. We have a very tight market, but we still sit on these buildings that are vacant and abandoned. We have a lot of neighborhoods with foreclosures, I feel, called too weak generally, from State Bank, that wants to know what our vacant building ordinance is, or who they send the check to. You know, because they're, they're foreclosing, they only have certain rules to jump through, it's become commonplace. But we, we don't have that vacant building ordinance in place. So that's what it is, that's what it does, that's what some of the impacts have been. What do you guys want to have?
Couple things, the, when I read through it, I didn't see, so if you can point it out to me. On the definitions part, where it says vacant, means a building or structure that is not legally occupied. Two questions that arise off of that. Number one, is that after X amount of time? You know, is it, when it's been considered legally vacant for more than a blank number of days consecutively? And, and if that's not in there, I think that's something that would be worth consideration. Because if, if you have, if you own a home and you're renting it out, and your tenant moves out, and they cause some damage, maybe it's gonna take you two months to rehab it, get it. So, you know, I don't think that it's worth, I, I understand the point you're trying to make, whereas if it is truly vacant. But I think there should be a provision in there to allow somebody to, that's moving forward, making it not vacant. I'd like consideration for that. The other one is that, what about buildings that are used as a warehouse? If, if you've got a business or private individual that is storing things as a warehouse, why is that vacant? Because I don't see, you know, it, all it says is, it's not legally occupied.
Well, and if you're using a, a building as storage, does that comply with the local, with the zoning in that, that difference? Those are all things to, to take into consideration. I would say the definition of vacant there, no legal, is a little bit different than the one in the, that's, that's out of the model ordinance. In the, which is, in the other one, has, has some slightly different definitions. You can, you can set those, you can set those in any way you want. A lot of the ordinances look at whether or not there's utilities to the house, and if it's been without utilities for a period of time. Some of them look at whether or not there are just evidence of, evidence of non-habitation. Nobody living there, will be near there for a long period of time. At a certain point in time, you have to, all statutes have a certain element of common sense to them, and you have to, you have to look at that. The other one, I'm not sure if it's in here, it's tied or not, but the other one, the one that I had drafted, it said, has a definition of evidence of vacancy. And that's, that definition is any condition that, on its own, or combined with other conditions present, would be an reasonable person who believes that the property is vacant. Such conditions include, but are not limited to, significantly below standard utility usage, overgrown or dead vegetation, accumulation of newspapers, circular splatters, or mail, accumulation of trash, junk, or other debris, broken and boarded up windows, abandoned vehicles, auto parts, materials, absence of window coverings, such as curtains, blinds, and or shutters, absence of furnishings, under personal items consistent with habitation or occupation, or statements by governmental employees that the property is vacant, i.e. the utility office and, and those sorts of things. So, so those are ways to, to, to do it. It also defines vacant building. As a vacant building is a commercial, industrial, residentially detached building, or a semi-detached building, or attached building with ownership separated by a common wall, which is, and has a number of things that it lists, unoccupied or unsecured. Unoccupied and secured by other than normal means, i.e. boarded up. Unoccupied and in an unsafe building, as determined by the building and or fire inspector. Unoccupied and having utilities disconnected, or unoccupied and has property maintenance or building code violations, or illegally occupied, which should include loitering and vagrancy. Unoccupied for a period of time of over a hundred and eighty days. Unoccupied with the mortgage status of abandoned, deceased or foreclosed, or unoccupied and has taxes in arrears for a period of time exceeding one year, or unoccupied and has one or more broken and boarded windows. Used for other than a permitted use of the zoning district, which is located unless the owner has provided documentation of the unit I can call it use. So those things are set out in, in the version that I kind of created out of some of these samples. I'm not sure if that's.
Do we have a copy of what you're going over?
I'm looking to see if you have that right now. No, I don't, I, I think I emailed.
Oh, that's good.
I would, I'd like, well, if you could email them to us, you did.
Yeah.
Sounds like they have an art job to it.
And would you consider that document to be your, your final draft, ready to be deployed as possible legislation, or do you have other?
No, I, I think I've covered most everything in that. Certainly, I'm not a firm arbiter, you, you guys are, so I mean, there's other things that you guys won't include it. That's, that document is probably five years every time this comes up in committee, we make some adjustments, see what the cities are doing, we've added and changed. And it is kind of a running, it's kind of a running, running tally, if you will, of, of changes over the last five years. So that's, that's what that means.
The main objective, as far as you're concerned, is, is to push forward a building being left abandoned through penalization to essentially encourage the owner to either sell, or make it habitable and useful?
Or, I thi- I think the main goal, from my perspective, is passing the cost of that vacant building from the city and from the people that live near it, to the people that own it. Because right now, the city's incurring those costs, the city's losing the revenue, the city's losing the tax base. The city's using a, a building that could be housing a new business, or a new family, or using utilities. The city's losing that. The city runs a risk with its safety forces, I mean, these guys running the buildings, if they don't know what the condition is. I mean, the building we tore down over here on East Mansfield a couple of years ago, that part of the building, you looked in the window, you felt the first floor was there, but that was actually the roof of the second floor. When the, the fire at the chicken plant, as you break up there, the fire at the chicken plant a couple of year, a year or two ago, they had no idea what was in there. It turns out, I mean, toxic smoke, people were sick for all around, they had no idea what was in it. And, and it's a vacant and abandoned building that, that we didn't know, and there were people living in there, they, they had no idea. So, you know, the burden of that, right now is shared by the city, and it's shared by the people that live around those. You can ask the people that lived on Rogers Street, what the, what the property value cost was for that period of time. And that property value cost comes back to, to the city, in, in lost tax revenue, the value of those properties. And so it impacts, impacts the people around it, it impacts the community, and it impacts the city. And I think what the property, what a vacant building ordinance, its chief goal is, is to take that cost, that burden, and transfer it from the city and from the people, and put it on the, the people, the owner of that building. And I think that's the, the primary goal. Now, will it have some beneficial side effects? Will it spur development? Will it make somebody say, hey, you know what, I really, I'm tired of paying this fee every year, I need to get this building into circulation, or get it into use, or just unload it? Yeah, maybe so. And, you know, I, I think it'll have a lot of those impacts, but the key thing is to, you know, let's quit. You know, one thing we hear here constantly is, is the, the tax burden and the utility burden on our citizens is, is, is high. And, and I get that. So here's an area where we can, we can maybe start to help them, and transfer some of the burdens that, that we experience, and the city experiences, and the community experiences, onto the people that are causing those, those problems. I think that's what we all believe.
Well, we, I mean, we had this discussion a lot back, and the, the biggest thing I got out of it was that, we all know there's bad landlords and there's good landlords, and then there's us in between. But the, I think we need to protect the, we need somehow protect the landlords that live in the shop, trying to keep it. So looking at, on this first one you gave me, or that we got here, exemptions and appeals, I would, I'd like to see, I have another one in there, it doesn't have to be on this one, but something along these lines, that landlords who are actively repairing, remodeling, or maybe getting them ready, up, ready to rent, have up to a hundred, a hundred and eighty days to do that. And then they also have maybe an option to, of an extension. I've got a friend of mine that I know, her family was repairing a house for years. They didn't live in it, but they were repairing it, and I, I don't think that cost should be passed on to them, because they took a house that probably would have sat empty, because they're now living in it, and they're either renting their home out, or, or, or sell it. So they're late, if, if we would have been tacking, you know, I don't know, however much five hundred years, um, it may have taken them a couple more years to get this done, so. So we need to protect those kind of people within this. But yeah, I do think we need to let the, the house that's been foreclosed on in the bank out in California somewhere, and has a neighborhood here, as well. We need to get on those, so.
Well, and I, I think too, that it's not just rentals, this is all property, whether it's owner occupied, or whether it's.
Yeah, I would say that specifically, this does not apply to rentals necessarily. This applies to buildings that are vacant and, and abandoned. And, and there is some, there's some judgment to that. I mean, I, I hear you saying about somebody that's, you know, undertaking renovations. We just had that on the street over here, where we went through renovations over, over a three-year period, and, you know, received by the county police corps. I, I don't think those houses meet the definition of vacant or abandoned, as it's set forth in, in any of these. So, I mean, I, I, I hear you saying, and, and I think some of these do have exemptions in, in certain cases. You know, when it's being marketed, when it's actively being sold, and things like that. But yeah, I, I think the, the first step is that, is do they even have, do those type of buildings even ever rise to the level of being vacant or abandoned? those type of buildings even ever rise to the level of being vacant or abandoned?
Well, they don't, yeah. We need to make that clear to, you know, I think that's why we have a crowd here now. And we need to make that clear, and then that, you know, hey, you know, if you're waiting to rent, get your rental, or you bought a house that you're repairing, this, this is not...
Yeah, and, and you know, we've been, we've been through times in, in our economy, and right now, things seem to move kind of quick. But, you know, where a house sitting on market for a year is not unusual. And, and so those, those are things, those are built into that, exemptions for, for that sort of thing.
Well, I was just wanting to know how you do the assessments. Is it according to how many units are in a building? Or is it an assessment just on property? Or are you, how do you come about, you know, monetarily, you know, determining what, what property is going to be over another one? You know, like when we charge those storm ladders, you know, we might have five, five apartments in one building. You know, you're, you're, you're charging everybody five times for that one building. So I mean, is that how this works?
No.
Or is it just...
Maybe, maybe as an example, 902, 904, 906 West Street. Each building has three apartments in it. So are we talking nine, are we talking three, or are we talking one?
Talking three.
Because it's only one parcel.
Yeah, yeah, three separate, yeah, three separate buildings, yeah, three separate structures.
I was gonna see, I was gonna suggest, or put this out for consideration, but if a, if a vacant home doesn't have any property maintenance violations, and I think that would be something to consider too, that, you know, some, somebody's vacant home could be, you know, I, I, you know, we talked about meeting the definition, but a vacant home could still be well-secured, and it could still be mowed and kept free from trash and debris, and not really be presenting a problem. Maybe a, maybe a registry, maybe you have to be on a registry after you've had so many property maintenance violations. Because truly, the house isn't causing a financial burden on the city until it gets into the category of property maintenance violations, and we're going out and doing work on it, that we probably won't collect that money back. So, I understand the, kind of the, you know, aesthetics issues with vacant properties and things, but I think also the property maintenance violations would be, you know, maybe said, that, you know, if you've had so many property maintenance violations, then your home is required to register on the vacant property registry. And that might be a, a mechanism for how you determine who needs to register. Because I think the other problem with this is, you know, the person who's law-abiding and owns a vacant property is going to probably go up and sign up and do, do what they're supposed to do as it relates to their vacant property. The person who doesn't care and doesn't take care of the things anyway is probably not going to follow that law and, and register and do what they, they should do. Another possible way of, you know, kind of, a possible trigger for what would put someone on a vacant property registry is if that property's already in bank foreclosure, you know, would be another step. You know, you mentioned that some of the banks are contacting you, saying, what's our process? Well, if we have a process for finding out when that home goes into that status, that could be the thing that puts them in the status of needing to be registered as a vacant property. And then, you know, at that point, I think most, most of those homes are no longer going to be, you know, the former owners or tenants are not going to care about what the condition of the property is once it's bank-owned, and that's when they are really going to start going downhill. So it's just a couple of suggestions on that. I guess, do you have any kind of expectations on what sort of things a vacant property owner should expect if they're on the registry? Like in terms of fees, and then just in terms of any inspections that might be required?
Yeah, th- those are all set out in the ordinance, and there's an annual fee. It escalates based on the number of years, and that's what most of them have done. I would, in response to a couple of your points there, there's no way for the city to find out when a house goes into foreclosure necessarily. And again, that's putting the burden on the taxpayers because that's putting the burden on us to try and find that out. Whereas by having a vacant building ordinance, and the, the onus is on the bank to say, hey, we're foreclosing, so that's why they call me. Because that's what they're used to, is that it's our duty to notify the public with law. And I think the biggest issue with this, that, that people fear, is that vacant and unoccupied are not the same thing. Okay? Unoccupied, my neighbor's house is unoccupied six months out of the year when he goes to Florida. That, that's unoccupied. Vacant, and the reason it's vacant and abandoned buildings is because it's vacancy that, it's vacancy plus. And I, I listed things I, I read there. It's vacant, and it has some of these other conditions. It's vacant, and it has no utilities, and no service, and, and evidence of, you know, you know, falling into disrepair, or whatever it is. So, unoccupied, you know, I mean, between tenants for a couple of months, or unoccupied, I'm trying to sell it, or unoccupied because I'm trying to rehab it. That's very, very different than vacant, I have to register my building because, you know, I haven't used it 10 years, I should sit there. So, that's, I, I think that's a key concept. It's very, it's a very difficult concept to graph. I get it, and you're talking legal jargon and legal definitions. But I think that's one of the, one of the things that people fear about vacant building ordinance is that distinction between what is vacant and what is just unoccupied.
Well, I think too, the, I think the property maintenance violations too. I mean, maybe at that point, it, it, you're probably not going to have the property ma... The, the bank foreclosed, or the house in foreclosure, you know, the property maintenance violations, or if it's not being taken care of by the bank, they're going to pile up probably pretty quickly. So I mean, that could be, kind of, those violations would at least trigger us to at least look at that property and say, okay, who owns it currently? You know, some research with the county auditor's office would probably tell us pretty quickly who's in, who's in charge of that property. And I would tend to think that those bank owners are going to be ones that will be more capable of collecting those fees and costs from during that process. I don't...
Yeah, what, what happens on those, and that's where you get that zombie house effect. What happens on those, and through that foreclosure process, is a bank will foreclose, and accept maybe even a deed in lieu of foreclosure so that people don't have to go through bankruptcy, or even go through bankruptcy. But what happens is the bank takes the property, asserts control over it, throws the people out, but then they never record that deed. So when I, I go to the county auditor's website to find out who owns it, it could be somebody that died 10 years ago, it could be somebody that, you know, was thrown out by the bank and now they're living there ever. And so, you know, then we gotta go to do the title search and find out who's got means, and then those means are sold, you know, the, you know, we learned in the mortgage crisis how those mortgage things are sold behind the scenes, and you never know. So then it's tracking those down, and, and, you know, one of the most recent ones, this company's actually held intent in the county police corps, racking up a thousand dollar debt fund. But the finance company that owns the house is, is called Everything is Awesome. And they're, they're based out of California. So I mean, it gives you, you know, from Lego, it'd be a company a year ago. I mean, it gives you some idea of how fly-by-night some of these, some of these entities are, that, you know, just layer upon layer. The, the Clark Station is an excellent example. It's torn down now. But it took, it took years to track down that ownership because multiple names, multiple registrations. It had a rather lengthy word as a name, but multiple spellings of that word, you know, as, as registrations, multiple, you know, number two, number three, kind of things. And ultimately, you were able to track that down. It was owned by a company in Michigan, and it was in part of bankruptcy proceedings in, in Chicago. So, sometimes it's, it's very difficult. So we want to pass that onus on those entities to force them to, to come to us. You, you don't drive into a town and say, is it legal to rob banks here or not?
I think the important thing for me is, I want to draw that, that line. I want to delineate between the guy who's taking care of his property, they're fine, we're not going to mess with them. It's the people that are below that line, or wherever, you know, if we're going to create new rules and new laws, they need to be ones that are specific to the, the people who fall below that line. And that's, I think again, why we've got a lot of people here tonight that are concerned, you know, the goal is not to, in my opinion, because the goal should not be to create extra hoops for the people that are doing the right things and don't care. So if we can come up with a solution that takes care of your concerns, and at the same time alleviates some of their concerns, I think that's a win for everybody. So I don't know if that's an possibility. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to reading back through that again, and going through it, see if we can't come to something that, that works for everybody.
We'll make sure everybody has a copy of that tomorrow.
All right. Kevin, before we discuss that, or before we recess that, and maybe, maybe where are we going to publish that so it can be re, so it can be reviewed by a public and everything?
Well, we will get to that point. Let's, let's get something, let's get a starting point first. If we get a starting point, and we're ready to start going through it item by item by item, then it'll be available, we'll have copies sitting here waiting for everybody as they walk in. But let us get to that first.
Yeah, I just don't want to have it be...
Yeah, we don't want to have 12 different documents running around, yes.
Nothing else for this committee?
We can ask, can you...
I thought it was down here. Any, any comments from y'all? If you have a comment, I'd appreciate it. Step to the podium and say your name and address for the record.
Remember our discussion item is vacant buildings?
I'm Bob Irwin, and I just have a couple of questions on this. Nothing was talked about in the building, that perhaps it would be an EBA involvement, or a med tank involvement, where your building is held up for eight years possibly. And that, that should be in that, to give a break to that person, because what are you going to do? A, a house, building, whatever, doesn't affect, affect the taxes for several years. So the 180 days, to me, sounds really a short time because a house would have to go from being okay to being in really bad condition before it's going to affect the value of the taxes of that building and/or the neighbors. So I think 180 days is way too short again. And I did understand the registering of these buildings. I mean, both are going to be some kind of registering fee. Would seem like another, just an expense that we don't need. And the fact that 116 cities are doing it, and Ohio don't tell me that we should be doing it because there's an awful lot more cities that aren't doing it. So, you know, saying 116 doesn't carry a lot of weight, I don't think. In Northrop City, because you quoted Toledo. I don't think this is a major issue besides. It might be, and I agree with Kevin, that there ought to be some way that that can be dealt with without putting burden on the people that take care of this stuff. And on a building that you might say is boarded up, boarded is one thing, but blinds is another thing. So if someone's using a building for warehousing, any warehousing area, or if Ron's had a property, and just because they got their windows with blinds over, or whatever on the inside, so someone can't look in and see what's there, what's stored, that should be considered as a boarded up building, or a disguised building, or anything like that. So I think, I mean, this is a big deal, really. It's not, it sounds fairly simple when you just talk about the little parts and pieces to it. But it affects, it's just like all, all your programs, it affects somebody in the pocket lot. And it seems to always come down to the landlord. I know you're talking, this is not just landlord property, but a lot of them are. Probably more of them are than aren't. In buildings, commercial buildings. What do you do with the Huntington Bank? Set it up there empty, and they set empty for five years. So what are you going to do? You going to start charging them because they've got the bad luck that they can't rent, or show their building? Yeah, there's lots of buildings in this town that people would like to be using, and it sounds, I mean, you made a, a good statement of where two buildings that the city has would set empty for a long time, not the one you could use. The other set empty a long time, and now there's going to be a business in there. It may last, it may not, but that, that doesn't mean that every building in this town can be rent overnight, or within a month, within six months, or a year. Because it depends on the size, what people are looking for. For so many parts and pieces of this, and if you're in the, in the business of renting, you see a total different side of it than you guys do, looking at it from management. And I don't know, a few of you have been tenants or landlords. But I think this is a long way from where I think it should end up.
Mr. Irwin, I've got a comment, and a question for you, so just let me ask you the question first. You said 180 days felt too short. Do you have in your mind the number, just for my, to know what...
No, but I, one thing that you said, when you said you knew someone that took a while to fix their building, or their house up, and all this stuff. I worked on houses for six months, and, and probably longer than that. People just, either, either the tenants kind of destroyed them, and/or over time, it finally got to the point where you need to go in and remodel back through, or whatever you do. And if you happen to be a landlord that does their own work, it don't get done in a few weeks, gets done in years, or a year. So I don't really have a good number, but I think it would have to be, I'm thinking more than a year, because I'm thinking it doesn't affect taxes till a lot more than a year. But why should we find some other way to say, you, you've come to the end of your string because 180 days or 100, 200 days? I, I mean, that's...
Sure, it's all...
And then the comment, I just wanted to make to you, I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, we initially had scheduled just health and safety for night for this purpose. Because I, I did want to take the time to let people, you know, have the opportunity here. So we are rushing in everything. I want to make sure that everybody understands that, that, you know, it's, it's my opinion that we do need to look at this very closely at length to make sure, and as I mentioned, that we're, we're doing it the right way so that the problems are addressed without having to make the things that aren't problems become problems, or have to jump through this group.
Well, I have another question on this too. Are we in the process of splitting up this vacant house, vacant building, searching houses, inspecting houses? Are we breaking this up into pieces? This wasn't one big deal, whereas...
It was, and I think, you know, from my standpoint, as we started to discuss it, a lot of us expressed the desire to look at it in pieces so that, number one, we could understand it, and number two, we could address the issues in front of us rather than as a big collective whole.
Yeah, what worried me about it is you get a, you break it into three or four pieces, and then we go in and we get close on this, and so we decide, let us do it. And then we do another in our way, and let's do it. And what ends up, we've got a big pallet that's broken into four pieces, and it's not a good one, because they don't gel together necessarily. Maybe it has to be a deal that, it's like in an auction. You, you buy this thing, and you buy this thing, and you buy this thing. Now we're going to bid the whole thing.
And that very well may be, as we decide on each portion of it, we can bring it back together as one, one finished product.
Because a lot of, a lot of these people can't come up to every council meeting. In fact, most of us saw, tonight, we were going to discuss the inspection of the... Townhouse, a town hall meeting we were going to have. So we need to make sure we do those things, and maybe it'd be good to have this in the town hall meeting. It's a little hard to sit out here and listen to you guys and not knowing whether you're going to be able to speak or bring your point out. But in a town hall, we will all be sitting around that thing.
And I would look forward to doing that in the future again. And again, all of us that sit in council are, our email addresses, our phone numbers, everything is published on the city website. We're here to listen to you guys. So if you've got concerns, you know, I encourage you to share with me. Thank you. Any other public participation? All right, seeing none, we'll recess. Health and safety at 7:09 PM.
Mr. Wireball, for finance, we have no, nothing to discuss. I agree, Mr. Wireball, for finance, we have no, nothing to discuss.
I don't agree.
Very good appropriation.
Yeah.
Income tax, fee basis.
Which we're still implementing, so we're ready for those in the, in your.
So, you'll need to finish?
Yeah.
So, go, go on the participation of, no more public. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees.
Joint special committees.
Special committees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:10 p.m.